Ms. Waugh, Dr. Mann.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Dr. Salvage.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Present.
Mr. Lewis.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we're going to have a report on accreditation.
That's correct. The Board will recall that the retreats the Board had approximately three, four weeks ago, it was determined that it would be very useful and appropriate for our accreditation work to have our accreditation co-leads, Dean Jordan and our faculty self-evaluation coordinator, Stephanie, to provide accreditation updates that were tied to the various standards and particularly the program improvements. So we're going to start that tonight.
Thank you, guys, for welcoming us here today. We are excited to present to you on Standard 1.
So just a quick summary of some of the things that Standard 1 is actually asking us to look for. So Standard 1, from the last time we talked about it, is split into two sections. And that first section is focused on the mission. So ACCJC wants to see that our mission defines educational purposes, students and commitments to learning. Programs and services need to align with the mission and it needs to be clear as to how the programs and services actually, you know, support the mission. That the mission is approved by the Board and then it's published widely and that the mission is regularly reviewed and revised as needed. And finally, that the mission is central to planning and decision-making at the college.
And I am very happy to report that we are just excelling, doing very well on Standard 1A. We meet all of these standards very clearly. And in fact, there was only one actionable improvement plan for Standard 1A. And that was for the college to clearly articulate a process and timeline for reviewing the mission statement. We last reviewed our mission statement in 2010. Many colleges have received recommendations in recent cycles calling on them to define the process and timeline for reviewing the mission statement. Interestingly, there is no place in the standards that say that you have to define this cycle and process. However, because it is popping up in frequent recommendations, we thought it would be a good thing for us to get ahead of with an AIP.
And can you, again, speak to what an AIP is, the actionable improvement plan, and what it used to be called, for those of us who might recall that?
What did it used to be called?
It was just, oh, action. I think it was action item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it action item?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, President Miller. What an AIP is, is through the self-evaluation, we evaluate how we perform according to a standard. And in the self-evaluation section, we, of course, evaluate that performance and we point out any areas in which the college could improve. The actionable improvement plan is the specific assertive statement of what is the action that the college will take to improve, to either come into compliance or to improve beyond a compliance level.
And there's a balance to how many you do. Is that not correct? Can you explain that a little bit?
Well, absolutely. Because one of the things that we'll have to do in our follow-up reports is to actually track and show how it is we're addressing every single one of these actionable improvement plans. And so we want to make sure that the ones that we need to actually increase our institutional effectiveness are there. And when you see the wording in the document you have, you'll notice that it'll say to increase institutional effectiveness, signaling to the commission that we fully meet the standard, but we know we could do a little bit better and we're self-identifying that. And so you'll notice that. If we were to have no actionable improvement plans, that would be very bad for us because it would look like we're not noticing how we can actually improve and we can always improve. If we have too many, then it becomes very laborious and, you know, resource, you know, taxing for us. And so, yeah, we have to strike that kind of balance.
Yeah, it's very important to be thoughtful about the actionable improvement plans because really, you do, the college will have to follow up on each and every one of them.
So is the reason we have this, it looks to me like this is something that could be done very quickly.
Yes.
I mean, we could, I could sit down before the Board meeting and write you a process and a timeline for this. So is the reason for putting as an actual improvement plan rather than doing it? That you want to have an actual improvement plan here?
I don't think it reflects negatively on the college to identify an AIP in the self-evaluation and then at the time of the visit or in the report that's submitted to the team before they arrive to state, "We have already, you know, implemented this AIP and accomplished it."
So this isn't an actionable improvement plan without a finding that we're not, we don't meet the standard?
Exactly.
Okay, this is one of the, I know what it is. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And then I think just also, I didn't do a proper job of introducing Professor Stephanie Fleming, who is a faculty coordinator, or our faculty self-evaluation coordinator for the purposes of people who are viewing the video tonight. And then Dean Matt Jordan, or Dean of our instructional support area, is also the accreditation liaison officer. So these are the two people who've got the primary responsibility for helping us get through our accreditation process.
And this moves us on to the second part of Standard 1. And so 1B looks at improving institutional effectiveness overall. ACCJC wants to see that we have consistent and meaningful dialogue about improvement in student learning and our institutional processes. They want to see that the college sets goals and that we articulate measurable objectives. So the institution needs to show that all of our members work to achieve those goals and objectives. So of course, we have to set them first and then show how it is that we're moving forward. We need to show that we have an ongoing systematic cycle of evaluation, integrated planning, resource allocation. So we need to make sure we're constantly doing evaluation, we're identifying those areas of improvement, and then we're showing how we allocate those resources to make sure that we are improving. We need to make sure that our planning processes are inclusive and so that, when appropriate, all groups have those particular types to be part of the planning process. ACCJC also wants to see that we documented our assessment results and that we communicate those results to the public. So not only are we evaluating ourselves, but then we make sure that we communicate the results to our constituencies, to the public, to the students, to everyone. We also need to show that planning and resource allocation processes are systematically evaluated. So this kind of relates also to the previous AIP. And then we also need to discuss the evaluation mechanisms and how they're systematically reviewed at our college.
Can I ask you, how are we doing with the assessment of all courses, I think, have to be assessed and with the goals and how's PCC doing in that area?
Yeah, so our student learning outcomes assessment is overseen by the Learning Assessment Committee. And each department submits an annual assessment report by November 15th of each year in which they report on the assessments that they've performed, the improvements that they've instituted in the previous academic year. Each department reports on one assessment per course. And the committee reviews that and provides a response to the faculty within the department. Last year, we presented this to you, I believe, early in spring. And you may remember, our compliance rate for the reports was rather low. I believe it was between 30 and 40 percent. By the end of the year, the deans working with the faculty in the departments had drastically increased that submission rate. It was well over 70 percent, which is a much stronger rate for the college. So I think that we are, we're doing well.
Okay, good.
Question? On the documented assessment results that are communicated to the public, can you give me an example of some assessment results that would be communicated to the public, not just people here at PCC, but constituents, the people in the district in general? What would be an example of something that we would report to them and how would we report it?
Sure. So there are many types of ways that we evaluate ourselves and that we make those available to the public. One of the ways are, you know, the way that the state is also evaluating is like the scorecard institutional set standards. Other things that we do more in-house, too, are like our program review processes. So when all of our program reviews are completed, then they're made available on the website. And so that those are available for the public.
Yeah, also, the results of learning outcomes assessment are made available to the public via the website, through presentations to the Board of Trustees on the scorecard metrics, on our EMP project 90 targets and achievement areas. Multiple presentations have been done by the Office of Institutional Effectiveness here that are then videotaped and made available to the public via the website.
How about press releases, getting the good news in the newspapers?
Yeah, that's another great example. You know, other things that come to mind are reports that are generated by the Office of Institutional Effectiveness on our student achievement outcomes that are made widely available to the public.
Is that like the pre and post tests for each class? Is that what's?
Yeah, that can include things like our success, retention, completion data that is broken down by different demographics, by different student characteristics, so that the public at large can really look at this data and see how PCC is serving our students.
When I look at assessment, it's assessment of, it's really how we learn what students are learning in a class. That's the most important thing. And it's usually by pre-test and then you give a post-test and those scores are communicated. But glad we're on it.
I'm sorry, Dr.
I just have a question on Standard 1. We got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 little checks. Are any of these because we don't meet the standard or are they all improvement?
They are all to improve institutional effectiveness.
So there's, we meet the standard in all these, these are to improve institutional effectiveness?
Yes.
What about on the next?
Oh, yeah. And these are not the AIPs. These are just a summary of what they're looking for in the standard in the next slide.
Yeah. Now we can talk about the AIPs.
So these are the AIPs that came out of Standard 2B. And I will address each of these individually. And I'll just reiterate, yeah, these are all to improve.
None of these are, we didn't meet the standard.
No, exactly. Very good point. So the first AIP addressed the college council evaluating its standing committees. In the evaluation process, it came to light that two of the college council standing committees had not met in some time, the professional development and enrollment management standing committees. Subsequently, those committees have been convened. And so this AIP will need to be reexamined. However, you know, just as a note, a self-evaluation document is, in a way, it's a look at a college at a slice in time. So this is where we were six months ago when a lot of this was being put together. And all of it will be given a final going over before the final document is sent forward. The next AIP addressed that all of the college council standing committees should document their meetings with agendas and minutes so that we have appropriate records. The college needs to explore, including the institution set standards, into the educational master plan. As Stephanie mentioned, we need to set targets for our achievement. For PCC, those targets include the project 90 targets that include areas such as four-year transfer, are we getting students to be transfer prepare, the number of degrees and certificates that they're achieving. There's another set of standards required by the federal government known as the institution set standards. Those are standards for minimum satisfactory performance. And the federal government requires that we set these standards in particular categories, for example, course success and retention. And currently, those are not included in our EMP. So the authors of that section thought that should be something for the college to consider. It could facilitate better communication with the public in terms of communicating all of our standards at once, since the EMP is our most widely distributed document. Another AIP was for the Planning and Priorities Committee to be more involved with the planning process. The PNP is very involved with the educational master plan update that has happened over the last year. However, planning doesn't just happen at the institution level. There are three additional levels at the college. An area level, including areas like the president's area, academic and student affairs area, and also unit and department levels below that. Currently, there are no college committees that oversee or involved in that level of planning. And so it was felt that the PNP could play a much-needed role to support and provide input to those planning processes. The technology master plan is ready to be updated. The last formal technology master plan was completed in 2006. There was significant technology planning around 2011 and '12 that addressed such areas as the banner implementation, the Smart 18 initiative, the website redesign and network expansion. However, those items were never formalized into a formal technology master plan. So now is the time for that technology master plan to be created.
And committees have already started to discuss that as well.
There was an AIP to develop a regular evaluation of our planning processes. Formally, we have been evaluating our planning processes regularly. However, we've been using ad hoc methods. Various surveys were administered that changed slightly year by year. Last year, they were evaluated through a group of ad hoc meetings called the Integrated Planning Study Sessions. And while each of these methods was successful in evaluating planning processes, the college could benefit from a defined, systematic, strategic way to assess our planning processes. Another AIP was to communicate our existing integrated planning processes. As I mentioned on the last AIP, the integrated planning study sessions were held last year. There were two items particular that came to light as a result of those evaluations, one of which was that we have the opportunity for clearer communication and understanding of our existing planning processes on campus. Another was, we have the opportunity to develop even stronger linkages between evaluation, planning, and resource allocation. So those are our final two AIPs for Standard 2B.
And if I can add quickly that, one of the reasons why we appreciated the Board's support on the AVP of Strategic Planning and Innovation is that Dr. Ryan Corner will be taking and has already begun to take the lead in the actual development of responses to these AIPs for Standard 1B. And Dr. Corner is, he's on an accreditation team this week, so that's why he's not here tonight. But we're already making significant progress on that. And the report will indicate that. And the self-evaluation already, I think, says something to that effect.
Which brings us to our next steps for Standard 1. So as you know, we're incorporating all the feedback. We're getting the feedback from you. Thank you again for having us here today so we can have some dialogue about Standard 1. We're also going through getting feedback specifically from the Planning and Priorities Committee, which is serving at the steering team for accreditation. And then we're also gathering feedback from the campus and multiple constituency groups right now.
Yes. And we really want to ensure that when the visiting team gets here, that they find, what they find on campus aligns exactly with what we've claimed in our report. And one of the, to ensure that we're doing that, we are being very aggressive and working across the college to make sure that all of our program reviews are current for instructional programs, for student affairs programs, and for administrative areas. And that also our annual SLO reports that I had mentioned earlier are all current when the visiting team arrives. And then finally, moving forward, we will be adjusting AIPs as needed based on input and based on recent developments on campus.
So the report is, our goal is to have it completed by December 15th?
Yes, to have it submitted by December.
By December 15th.
Yes.
Now, that does not mean, though, that it's all said and done. So between December 15th and March 2nd, the date that the visiting team is here, we can continue and will continue to make progress on these things and will provide a summary of our additional progress. Can you explain that process real quick?
Sure. We're allowed to provide an addendum to the self-evaluation report and give that to the team to kind of bring them up to speed on everything that has happened between the time we submitted the formal self-evaluation and the time that the visiting team comes and sees us. So that way, they'll be up to date.
I just have one more question. I've looked at the, I'm very pleased to hear that these are all AIPs and that we are in compliance with the standards. And so my question is, I'm going to ask this with each of these presentations. Is there anything in here that the Board needs to do other than engage in this dialogue? I mean, I know on the Standard 4B, there were some things the Board needs to do. Is there anything the Board needs to do to assist or to make sure that we're ready with this?
The Board will need to, just to provide a very direct, formal answer, the Board will need to support the development of the technology master plan to receive reports on that. Other than that, this is really operational college work.
And if I may also add that with the Board President's permission, we are planning for the October 15th study session, a presentation to the Board. What we're recommending is three-year Board Goals for 14, 15, 16, and 16, 17. And they're going to revolve around five primary themes. The first one is student success, graduation and completion initiative. The second is collegiality. The third is social justice. The fourth is community engagement. And the fifth is institutional effectiveness. And these are all, these will all be fleshed out and you'll see specifically what we're talking about. In that regard, we're also going to present a draft of the President's Area Plan, which talks about, from the presidential level on down, how it is that we are going to implement these Board Goals over the three-year period with annual reviews. And also how we are going to make sure that they are integrated with the planning and priorities, the planning process, and more specifically, the educational master plan and the like. So you'll see more about this. And that'll be also evidence of participation by the Board. And we're also going to bring to you a proposed 14, 15 organization charts for this year based upon the changes that we've made. And finally, we're going to talk about the Board Orientation Packet. And we've got, I think, an A, B, and C version of that. So if it makes sense, the study session will be those four items. That's further evidence of the Board doing deep dive into the things that the Board needs to be aware of.
Any other comments?
Two quickies. One, this is wonderful. I appreciate the way we're subdividing this. And I don't know if next time it's going to be automatic that we're on Standard 2, but it would help to signal that because I'm trying to systematically personally read through this and I'll try to do, time my reading to match what we're talking about, you know? Like, I've been reading 4 and here we are at 1.
Good idea. Good point.
I think of all the community feedback I get of where something happens and then people talk to you as a trustee, "Oh, I saw, I saw, I saw." I think the one that's always generates the most "I saws" to me is the news piece that we put out periodically to everybody in the district.
Right.
So if we're looking for a really nice place to put something that's really clear evidence of informing the public on accreditation, that might be a really nice piece.
It's a very good suggestion.
What piece are you speaking of?
Periodically, the district mails to every home, I think. I don't know.
Yeah, usually.
Is that home or everybody in the district or is that voters or how do we get the list?
It's, well, first of all, it usually comes out in late February, early, late January, early February. It's called the President's Report. And it's mailed to every residence. It's about 30,000 pieces, I think, even more than that. So it's not every residence, but there's a, maybe it's $30,000. That's what I'm thinking about. But anyway, it goes, it goes out very far and wide to all of the voting households, I think is what it's tied to, I guess. I need to find out more information, but it's something that we print annually. And we didn't do it this year for a variety of reasons, but I think what trustee Martin is suggesting is actually a great idea.
And I think it might be a good idea to rethink the name. It didn't, it used to be called the President's Report. It used to be called something like Pasadena City College Reports or your college, you know? And so that it wasn't just the president, it was the entire college. Probably you can find one of the older one in the morgue and look and see what it says.
I can assure you, this interim superintendent president has no need to call it that. So we'll come up with a better name, I assure you. That's a great, but that's, those are two really good suggestions.
No, but I think that's really, that's really important because after the name was changed, a few people said to me, "Oh, well, I used, why aren't you sending them anymore?" And I said, "Well, Cindy was under a different name." But I think we ought to change it back or find something that's more inclusive.
Yep. I agree. And we'll do that. So thank you.
If we're sending it to just voter households, and I understand those lists are available.
No, it's everyone. It's not just voter.
It's not voters.
It's everybody.
It's everybody.
It's every address.
It's every address in the district.
Maybe, yeah, what, yes, I'll find.
That's what it's supposed to be, right?
Yeah. It's every tax, maybe it's every taxpaying, whatever. We'll figure it out. It goes to a lot of people, I know that, and we'll do the same thing. It's a technical term.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now adjourn to closed session with the attorney. Highlight what we're doing.
Ladies and fellow, tonight, your closed session agenda is collective bargaining, PCCFA, lead negotiator, Mr. Bruce Barsuk, Government Code Section 54957.6. Collective bargaining, CSCA, CFT, and POA, lead negotiator, myself, Government Code Section 54957.6. Next is public employee appointment. Interim Director of Admissions and Records, Government Code Section 54957. Next is employment of Superintendent President, search consultants aboard, Government Code Section 54957B4. And last is conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, three matters. These are POP et al. versus PACCD, case number B252272. The next is a workers' compensation matter, Jesse Moore, case number 746.115. And the last is Californians Aware versus the Board of Trustees, case number BS151112. And that's Government Code Section 54956.9A.
Thank you very much. The Board will now adjourn to closed session. How does this, is this on?
I'd like to report what happened in closed session. Dr. Vicky Nicholson, who is the retired Associate Vice President of Human Resources for Glendale College, has been hired unanimously by the Board of Trustees to be the Board Consultant for the Presidential Superintendent Search. We have, the Board also decided unanimously that requests for RFPs for the search be canceled immediately. And the, because we want to get Dr. Nicholson on board first. And the Board also unanimously, on September 3rd, is it the 3rd? Appointed Dr. Miller as interim superintendent president by unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Are you still happy about that?
I'm very happy, yeah.
Do you want to, do you want us to reason? You've got more gray hair.
I do. But it's okay. It was good. We're doing fine. I appreciate the Board's support and the Board's faith in me. So I continue to do my very best. Thank you.
If you sign your contract tonight, we'll be set. Okay?
There it is.
Ladies and fellow, you also wanted to report out regarding the request for proposal.
Pardon?
You also wanted to report out the closed session action regarding the request for proposal.
I think he did.
Oh, did he? I'm sorry.
He just did. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Salvage, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pleasure. I pledge allegiance to this flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do the trustees have any introductions this evening? Mr. President, do you?
Actually, I'm going to defer this to Dr. Bell, who's going to be working with the deans to introduce our new faculty.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen, it's the opportunity that we look forward every year. We get a We get an opportunity to introduce our newest faculty who have been hired. And so we have four of our deans here this evening, and they will introduce those new tenure-track faculty who are here with us today, so you get an opportunity to see who is performing instruction in the classroom. And we are going to start with Dean Solomon Davila of the School of Career Technical Education.
Hi, good evening, Board of Trustees, and thank you very much for giving us the opportunity here this evening to introduce our newest members to our full-time tenure faculty rank in the School of Career and Technical Education. First, we have Ms. Sandy Lee, right next to me. She's a licensed architect and is also Lead AP, has worked in many architecture industry projects for over eight years of many scales and focusing on sustainable design. She's most excited when our built world becomes an incubator of positive experiences for our students and brings this to this line of thinking to the classroom where the end goals of much design happens. She's taught here since—at PCC since 2007 as an adjunct instructor, and her efforts are brought forth to develop our Design Technology Program, for which much of the collaboration of contextualized learning happens with math and English within our fabrication laboratory. She is a proud PCC alumni and transferred in 2001, and has a bachelor's degree from SciArc and a Master's of Science in Advanced Architectural Design from Columbia University. We also have Ms. Wendy Luco. Wendy, also a proud PCC alum, graduated from our Automotive Technology Program here in 1998. She returned here to help us as a laboratory technician back in 2007. She has demonstrated professional growth in educational pedagogy, and it relates to technical education, obtaining outside credentials to work on state-of-the-art transportation equipment, for which she truly believes in empowering our students to learn to be competitive in the workforce. She highly believes in personal responsibility when it comes down to making sure our students learn that here at PCC before they go out into the workplace. And she has shown leadership in many committees here as a classified member, and now is a proud member of our faculty rank. We also have Dr. Shannon Johnson, newest member of our Career Tech program. She is centered—focused on developing program development in the field of experimental learning and prepares students for success in their desired educational and professional paths. She came to PCC en route through California State University, Northridge, for which she was a co-director of the career education at the Nazarian College of Business and Economics for almost a decade. There, she helped develop and grow an internship program from less than 100 internships a year to nearly 1,000 internships a year. In addition, Dr. Johnson is actively involved in professional organizations devoted to best practices in career services and work experience. Dr. Johnson holds a doctor in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Cal State Northridge, a Master's in Educational Administration, Master's in Kinesiology, and a secondary education teaching credential. Her education centered around the transformative leadership devoted to equity, diversity, and social justice in higher education. I want to welcome these three new faculty to the School of Career Technical Education. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amy Almer, Dean of the School of Humanities and Social Sciences, and it is my pleasure to introduce—you can come closer—John Tyberg, who is the newest member of the English Department. John is also a PCC alum, and his former clarinet teacher is here in the audience, Dean Arnwey. I taught him how to play the clarinet. So we haven't heard him play yet, so I'll talk to you later, Jim. John, after he left PCC, went on to Cal State Long Beach, where he got a bachelor's degree in literature with an emphasis in English education. And then he received his master's degree from Cal State Long Beach in rhetoric and composition, which positions him perfectly for teaching composition here at PCC. Before he came here, he was at Golden West College. He also taught ESL in Vietnam, so he could learn more about students in another country and what it was like to be—learn a language in another country. His scholarly interest is critical theory and 20th century literature. And prior to taking his full-time position, he was an adjunct for one semester, and then he was a one-year temporary instructor. So he's not totally new to us, but he's new in his status now. And he's currently teaching in our Stretch Acceleration Composition Program. And very important, he has one child and one baby on the way. So, thank you. Welcome, John.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Price. I'm the Associate Dean of the Social Sciences. It's good to be here this evening. I'm happy to introduce and present our newest faculty member, Monica Cotto. I was thinking, as Solomon was up here, I says, "I wish I could have three folks to introduce." Maybe—maybe next time.
Yeah.
At any rate, Dr. Cotto is trained at UCLA. She is a Bruin. Isn't that nice?
Well, some people have to be a Bruin.
Her concentration is and was neuroscience. She has taught historically at Mount St. Mary's College, Cal State Fullerton, Fullerton College, and of course, now she teaches here. We're certainly happy to have her. She teaches classes in psychology, of course. She comes to us with eight years of teaching and research experience. These days, she teaches classes in Intro to Psych, Physiological Psychology, and Research Methods in Psychology. She also is a member of the American Psychological Association, Western Psychological Association, and Society for Teaching of Psychology. Again, I'd like to introduce and welcome our newest member of the Social Sciences, Monica Cotto.
Well, good evening. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce the newest member of the School of Science and Math. This is Melissa Anderson. Melissa Anderson has a bachelor's in biochemistry from BYU and a PhD in biophysics from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. She is this little package of high-impact practices she's done. She's gotten—she taught for four years. Before coming to us, she taught for four years at University of Madison at La Crosse. And there, she put together some grants to redesign biology and chemistry curriculum to make them much more project-based, hands-on. And she is our goddess of assessment. This person lives, eats, and breathes assessment, so she's going to do a lot of wonderful things for us, and we're really glad to have her. So, thank you. Melissa Anderson.
Dr. Miller, that concludes our introductions.
And I believe there are other faculty couldn't join us tonight?
There are indeed. There are other faculty could not join us tonight, and they're—I think they thought they were teaching, but it's flex day, so they took the day off. But there are other faculty, but this is representative of the group that we hired.
Very good.
On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I welcome you to Pasadena City College. And I believe that college teaching is the greatest job in the world. I've done it for 28 years, and I have loved every single day of my life. Not so much being an administrator, but this year I return to the classroom, and I love it even more. So I wish you the best in your teaching careers, and it is a great honor to have you here. Thank you. I forgot all about public comments. Now is the time for public comments, and Ms. Wa.
We have two speakers on public comments. The first is actually from my area, Denise Wadsworth. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the yellow light will go on one minute before it stops. Welcome, Denise.
Hello, Mrs. Wa. Hello, Board. You sent us on a mission, and I've got to tell you, Dr. Fellow, in my three minutes, that I teach middle school, and I think those are the wonder years, and I love them so much.
I taught those years, too.
So we were on a mission from you to find out if the community was interested in providing veteran services and veteran health services here at PCC. And I want to tell you, this is the most important thing I have yet to do in my 51 years on this planet. I have had nothing but enormous support. I presented to our Rotarians at training. I was at the Pasadena Rotary today. I'm at Arcadia Friday. I'm at the After Hours on Thursday. I've talked to Sierra Madre's Rotary. Our Rotary at San Marino knows what we're doing, and so far, we have pledges of $40,000 before our All-City Talent Show with Rotarians ages 9 to 91 performing. All funding going to the future Veteran Health Center of the foothills on this PCC campus. I want you to know that as a Rotarian, I believe fully in transparency. I am raising young Americans, and I want them to never forget how important our veterans are. And if I do not teach them and share this with them, they will not know. So if there is a question, any of you, any of you, any of you, look deeply in my eyes. I have you. Any of you have about what we are doing here and how important it is to us and to your communities from here all the way. We are doing something first in the nation. It's so important. Please let us know how we can help you. Patty DeOrange Martin is your contact here. If she can't answer that question, I don't know who could because she knows her job inside and out. That little angel deserves a royal cake with major frosting for what she does. So with that, I thank you so much. Remember, I'm not bossy, I'm passionate. Thank you.
I love your enthusiasm.
Yes, known as a woman on fire in San Marino.
There's a lot of women on fire in San Marino.
Yeah, that's right.
If I—yeah, there's something in the water, I think. If I might, I'd like to also introduce Mr. Enrique Robles with Congresswoman Chu's office, who's also in the audience tonight. And I do want you to know that not only they are a passionate group, but they are highly engaged in this process, and we continue to be working with them. There's some Board members that are going to be participating in a meeting on Tuesday morning, and we are working—all working very hard to answer the questions that every Board member had when this topic was raised a few months ago. So know that we are committed to working with you to try and make sure we answer all the Board's questions in the manner that the Board has asked us to. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here. I had dinner with—she was sitting next to me at dinner two weeks ago, and we talked about the clinic, and she's very enthusiastic about it. And so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We now have Michael Steves. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi. My name is Michael Steves. I work with Klinger Digital, which is a small ad agency and video production company that I started with two of my best friends from high school. And we worked with the SBDC to help grow our business. And basically, the SBDC was our business school. When my friends and I moved out to Los Angeles, looking to start an ad agency and a production company, we were basically artsy film students. We couldn't tell you what gross profit was. We couldn't tell you what net profit was. We really knew just about nothing about doing a business or running a business. So we came to the SBDC with our inexperience, really only knowing how to make videos. The SBDC taught us really everything that we needed to know to start a business. They taught us how to form an LLC, how to draft an operating agreement. They taught us the business basics, essentially. They also taught us some lifelong skills, like how to negotiate, how to respect ourselves as business owners so that clients would respect us. So they're actually in the audience, Sal Patrice and Albert Napoli over there. They're our business mentors, and they really helped us get to where we are today. So to give you an idea, when we started our business, we were—we were making low-budget videos for, I think, a rapper and a tiny business that no one had heard of. And as of today, we just passed $135,000 in sales for the year, and we've created a sustainable business, working with clients in a range of industries, in television production and a variety of other industries. So yes, we're advocates for the SBDC. As a small business owner, I would highly recommend anyone starting a small business to get with the SBDC, learn a little bit about how to run their business, and I really think that they brought us to where we are today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes. I think we could do all these at one time?
Unless—I'm sorry, President Fellow, unless anyone was absent wants to abstain, you may have to call them out separately.
I move a—second.
You have a motion from Ms. Brown, a second from Ms. Wa. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What are you doing?
I'm aye. I just didn't have the microphone. I didn't want to yell it.
Did you say, "I'm aye"? I thought nothing came out with the student trustee voting aye. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to approval of consent items. Is there any that the Board would like pulled, or?
I'd like 51B as in Bravo considered separately, please.
51B as in Bravo. Anyone else? Should we talk about 51B first, or?
You can do it the way you want.
Let's talk about 51B. Maybe we can just include it in—51B.
Yeah, these are referred to as piggyback contracts and agreements, and by virtue of being able to do that, we presumably save some money. But I don't believe there's any indication here as to what the money is and what we're saving or anything else, and so I'd like to know that. Joe, yes, Joe, please.
So in response to the question, these are piggyback contracts that other organizations have already put through the formal bid process. We have not currently gone through a request for any types of supplies or materials related to this. We're creating a list of organization—sorry, contracts that have already been formally bid out. So if we can use them and it is advantageous to the district, then we would move forward.
So what you're saying is that before any money is involved, it'll come back to us for further consideration and decision?
Correct.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Yeah, my attention was drawn in other words, but under fiscal implications, where it says no fiscal obligations created by the authorization utilized the piggyback contract, so we will bring that back at a later date.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? I do want to mention to you that 58B has been revised.
Yes.
And you have that in front of you, and we're pulling 32P this evening, which is in the red folders. With that, I will—we have a motion to approve.
I approve. I move that we approve consent items.
We have a motion from Ms. Brown, a second from Ms. Wa. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Abstentions? Student trustee voting in the affirmative. Now, number F, approval of the agreement between interim Superintendent President and the Pasadena Area Community College District.
I believe you do need a formal action. Do you—this, as I recall.
Need a motion, yes. It's an action item.
It's an action item.
Let's hope there's a motion.
So move. Second.
We have a motion from Dr. Mann, a second from Ms. Wa. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously with student trustee voting in the affirmative. We also have the certification of signatures, which is pro forma, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Will we authorize the signatures? Second.
We have a motion from Dr. Mann, a second from Ms. Wa. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. Next, the appointment of Measure P, Citizens Oversight Committee, and—
Yes, I can speak to that if you would—oh, sorry.
Do you want to pass it to Paul this evening?
Yes.
What we'd like to do is—that Dr. Salvage has a number of questions that deal with this, and we'd like to bring it back at the next agenda, if that's okay.
I would, you know, I have a, I don't know if the person I appointed was here, but I would like, maybe, I think maybe we should hear some of those questions now. I mean, Ms. Brown and I were both on the committee, and I think we feel very comfortable with these recommendations. And I don't know, are the questions with all the candidates, or is it just with one? Can we approve everyone except the ones you have questions on?
The, excuse me, the Oversight Committee has four, let's see, three seats, which are designated as having, are designated for people with particular backgrounds or representative of organizations. And one of them, the, let's see, the foundation, the foundation seat had only one applicant. The local business organization and the taxpayer organization seats both had multiple applicants. And I don't see anything in the package here, what the names of the people were and what their qualifications were.
Oh, that was in our red folder, I think.
What is in your red folder is information, is the item H revised?
Oh, so we didn't, we don't have that. Well, then that's legitimate, Mr. Trustee Salvage. I didn't realize that you didn't have that. So what you need is the resumes for all these people.
Right. In order to have an informed discussion and cast a vote, I want to know.
That's fine.
Who they are, what their qualifications are. I'm interested in what the vote was. Was it, well, three members, so it was two to one or three-oh recommendations.
And I might point out, we usually also have the resumes. Well, I think we did have it, because I remember seeing the picture.
We had bios.
We have the bios, yeah, we have the bios.
Not for, not for all the candidates.
Yeah, it should be all of them. Roger Chandler was the only one that was added today. But the rest of them are all in here.
They're all in the package?
No, I'm not talking about the bios for the people who are the recommendations. I'm talking about the bios for the people who applied for the taxpayer organization representative and the business organization representative that were not recommended.
So just to be clear, in the binders, we do have a memorandum that was included. Here are the bios for the following six representatives of Citizens Oversight Committee, the local business organization, the taxpayer's organization, the foundation, PTSA, and then for trustee areas, two, five, and six, Mann, Wa, and Martin. So these were.
Those are just the ones that are recommended, not the other candidates.
He wants the ones that weren't recommended that applied.
So that's, we did not include those.
So what is, what are we doing?
Delaying it for two weeks to provide the other information that's been requested.
I would like to recommend, if we can approve the trustee appointments, and Mr. Shield, who's the only candidate.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Certainly.
Fine with me, sure.
Have a motion from Ms. Wa.
Second.
A second from Mr. Thompson. Further discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question, so.
Well, I also have to, excuse me, I also have to add, in front of you, you have my nominee, which is Councilman Roger Chandler from the City of Arcadia.
But he's a single person, so we could, I mean, he's a single nominee, so we're also approving him.
So may I have the floor now?
Yes, Ms. Brown.
So basically, what we're saying is that the recommendations of the Ad-Hoc Committee was not accepted. We do have a question about, I think it's the business organization, is that correct? Mr. Salvage?
No, the business organization and the taxpayer organization representatives. Both of those had multiple applicants, and I want to, I just want to see what the qualifications are of the people that were not recommended. I don't feel comfortable voting for a recommendation if I don't know who was in the running, who else was in the running, and what their qualifications were.
So basically, you did not get the information?
Correct.
Okay, so, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve Mr. Shield and the representatives from the trustees. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimous with the student trustee voting in the affirmative.
Trustee Fellow?
Yes, ma'am.
My point, and I pointed, Ms. Felicia Williams is here in the audience. I'd like for her to stand to be recognized. And if anyone else is here, I think they should be introduced.
Thank you for serving.
Yes, Mr. Carter is here. Would you like to stand up, Mr. Carter? He is the person that I nominated for the business organization. So if anyone have a question, this might be a good time for him to answer it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You know, I would like to move that we accept the committee's recommendation. There was no motion on that. I'm going to move we accept the committee's recommendation on the appointment of the other two.
I'll now second that.
But the items were pulled. The parliamentarian, if an item is pulled.
Well, apparently, you have a disagreement whether the item was pulled or not, President Fellow. So for them to be pulled, that would take a vote.
That would take a vote. There has been no vote on that.
Motion or no vote.
Okay.
I thought.
I thought it was, when you pulled an item, it was up to the, you didn't need a vote.
Not after it's been put on the agenda.
Oh, okay. You want to do a motion to?
I make a motion that we.
There's a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor to approve, so let's do that first. Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
We have a second from Ms. Wa.
I think Ms. Brown was the second on that. Look, without trying to comment on the nominees or anything of that nature, it just strikes me that we don't sacrifice anything by deferring this for two weeks' time so that additional information can be provided, which has been requested. To move forward like this seems to me to be one of those steps that is not necessary and is going to achieve nothing but create some animosity or antagonism or ill will. And I just don't see the benefit of doing that. I think we should abide by the request by Dr. Salvage to give them the additional information that's been asked for and to defer the nominees for a two-week period of time. It's not asking for very much.
I also agree with Mr. Thompson. I did have a conversation with Dr. Salvage today, and he had some very important points, I believe. And I will vote to pull this.
I have a question that's relevant to my motion. When does the next, does the committee meet next?
It meets October 28th.
The end of October.
The very end, 28th or 29th.
Yeah.
And when is the next business meeting of the board?
15th.
15th.
But if we change that to a study session, then it won't meet until November, until November, correct?
But we can do business at the study session.
We can do a little business, yes.
Okay, well, my concern is, one of the people that's being recommended, I think, has, what was notified, they were, had been recommended and has changed business plans in order to, you know, to beat the meeting. But as long as it doesn't affect the meeting that much, it's okay. My other point is, this is the first time, and I've been on the board a very long time, that anyone has ever challenged the work of the subcommittee. And I think it's a bad, I think it's a bad precedent.
Do you want to pull your motion?
No, I support my motion. I think that, I think the work of the subcommittee should go forward.
One other quick comment.
I have a point of order, President Fellow. So you have a motion pending and seconded, and now if trustee Thompson's making a motion to delay, that needs to be ruled on first.
Well.
No, he's not making a motion.
All I'm saying is that I don't think anybody is questioning the work of the committee. They're simply asking for additional information. I think that's a major distinction. I don't see why we would have any objection to delaying this and providing that information, then take a vote.
Well, may I say something?
Yes.
Why, I don't understand, how is it that we met at the retreat, and why is it that Mr. Salvage was not provided the information about the candidates? That is where I'm having a problem understanding.
Well, first of all, let me correct the record here. I just got a text from Mr. Smith. The meeting is October 22nd, Oversight Committee meeting. Secondly, I don't have the answer to that, trustee Brown. And if it was a staff oversight, we apologize for that.
Further discussion? Okay, we'll take a motor, we'll take a roll call vote on this one. Ms. Thompson?
Which motion is this we're voting on?
Motion to approve the, all of the members of the committee.
Dr. Fellow?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Wa?
Yes.
Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Dr. Salvage?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Motion fails.
You forgot somebody.
Oh, Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry.
No.
Motion fails. Thank you all very much. Okay, number, action item I to that, tonight is the Board of Trustees Self-Assessment and College Climate Study. Mr. President?
So in your packet, there is a discussion piece about the RFI consultant process and what staff has been doing and what the shared governance groups have been doing relative to the solicitation of a consultant that would work with the various constituent groups and individuals on campus relative to the modern think survey data and the outcomes of that data and what we do with that data. I believe at the retreat, there was a further discussion about working with this consultant to also work with the board in relation to its self-assessment. What you have in front of you here under item I is a report from the, from Dr. Corner and the Planning and Parties Committee in relation to this RFI process. I also believe there was an additional document, one sheet that was, that was an addendum that was added that kind of gave an update of the Planning and Parties Committee meetings, discussions, I believe it was last Friday, late in the day, when they got together and they further considered this item. I believe, and if there's someone in the audience here who can correct this, that the general consensus as of Friday was essentially that, that it very well may be that a consultant is an important thing to have, and as a result of that, the process should play out. And then after the process plays out, then there can be a further determination as to whether the district will move forward or not with that. So this item was placed on the agenda by the board members, and so we're trying to give you as much information as we can as to what the current status of things are.
Questions by trustees?
I have a question.
Ms. Wa?
So, Dr. Miller, if the shared governance group decides that they don't want to work with a consultant, but the board thinks that it's important that, because there is a portion of this campus climate that affects the board, could we bifurcate that?
I would think so. I found the sheet, and for the record, I might read what the committee stated. This was as of Friday, September 26. It says, "On Friday, September 26, 2014, the selection committee for the campus climate consultant met to review the proposals. The committee engaged in an excellent conversation on the need for an outside consultant and the manner in which the proposals met the current needs of the college. The conversations were collegial, self-reflective, and analytical. The committee decided to forward all candidates onto the interview phase in order to ensure that any discussions and the need for a consulting firm were informed by all available evidence. The interviews are tentatively planned for Monday, October 13, 2014. Final recommendation will be discussed as previously planned on October 20, 2014, at the Planning and Party Standing Committee." So to answer your question, trustee Wa, this group is focusing primarily on the process that began last spring. And in a, very much a shared governance way, they are proceeding. And they have not made a decision either yea or nay at this point, but they do believe it's important to play out the process.
So there's really no action on that?
No, this is.
I'm sorry. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have to comment on that, because that was something that sort of struck me. I think it will be, if it's doable, because Linda may have said it already, but the fact that if the faculty and all these, I see we have pretty much consensus are this, these people that are signed off are these groups, all in support of us sort of not hiring someone?
Well, the report basically is a recapitulation of the situation as it exists right now. The contributors in the discussion that helped prepare this report was Dr. Corner as the key staff member, Chris Pallone, Academics and Vice President, representing the Academic Senate, Jeff Wojcik, the Classified Senate President, and Dr. David Douglas, the President of the Management Association. So this particular document is one that is agreed to by all of those individuals representing those groups.
That was my question. Okay, so, yeah, I think that is something that we really should think about. And if you, you, as the administrator of this college, think that that's something that is possible, I would definitely, would be in support of it.
Thank you. Well, I was actually quite pleased with the outcome of the meeting last Friday, because it showed an open mind in terms of to continue the dialogue and continue to discuss what the situation is. There is a general feeling that things are quote-unquote "improving" on campus. And I think we just need to let some more time go by. In the meantime, a lot of people want to, a lot of effort to put these proposals together. And I applaud the committee for deciding that it would be appropriate to play out the process.
Thanks.
And I'm looking at Chris Pallone out there, and she's keeping me straight back there, I hope. So thank you. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item J, which is distinction between board bylaws, board policies, and administrative procedures.
Yes, there has been some discussion. I thought we had addressed this, but apparently we didn't actually act upon it. The, all the, all the policies that are in the 2000s sequence are actually board bylaws. They have to do with the way the board conducts its business. And it has always been the board's position that these policies in item J, in the 2000s sequence, do not have to go through the shared governance process because they do not really involve anyone else on campus. It's because it tells, it's how the board conducts its own business, just as we don't tell the faculty senate, the classified senate, how they should conduct their business. And I think that's really an important distinction to be made. The consultant who worked with us said there's really no difference in them, and recommended that we not make this distinction. I think it's a very important distinction, to the point that I think we should actually change them from BP, board policies, to BB, which would be board bylaws. And then there's a second part of this. If these are board bylaws, then I do not think it is appropriate for there to be administrative procedures to implement them. So all the other policies, there, the board makes a policy, and then the, if necessary, the superintendent president develops a procedure to implement it. But for the board bylaw, which tells us how we organize ourself, how we run our meetings, how often the trustees are elected, I don't think we, it's appropriate to have an administrative procedure telling the trustees how to conduct their own business. And in fact, if, there should be in this 2000s sequence, a policy or a bylaw which actually needs an administrative procedure, we probably should move it over and put it with the policies rather than the bylaws. And the reason I, and that was my understanding, that's what I thought we agreed to do, but some questions has arisen on that. One of the things that happens is, a couple of these board policies actually have a few procedures in it, like the one for the search for a superintendent president. But again, I thought if we were doing this, that we would not have an administrative procedure to implement a bylaw. To me, that just did not make any, any, any sense. So I wanted to make, I wanted to bring it to the board and get clarification. If the rest of you do not, if other members do not agree, then that's, that's fine. We can, we can do it differently. But I think it's an important distinction to make, and I'll give you an example. The last time, before the last accreditation committee, when we started through these, in this 2000s sequence, there must be at least 40, Ms. Colas, maybe 40 policies. The then-president, who is no longer on this campus, and we're talking six years ago, took all of these to the college council. And college council, and was giving us the results. It was, and then college council was sending it out to their various constituent groups. And, and once we found this out, we said, wait a minute, this, this does not go through the shared governance process. So what I'm suggesting was, maybe we should change it to, instead of BP, to BB. BB for board bylaws, it's kind of silly sounding. And to make everyone understand that these are bylaws on the way the board conducts themselves. Everything we have in these policies and bylaws are legally required, except one or two things. We are legally required to have this. But I, and that to me would help clarify, so we wouldn't have this, this clear understanding. And then that's the first thing. And then secondly, does the board agree with me that it is not appropriate to have And then, secondly, does the Board agree with me that it is not appropriate to have an administrative procedure to implement a bylaw? And if we need administrative procedure, we should move it out of the bylaw section and the policy section.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. Ms. Spronk?
I was looking for the printout or the information under J, it was blank. Did we have?
No, there is no background.
There's nothing, it's just in your brain.
No, it's not. It's not just in my brain, it's a result of several conversations. There is an email stream which involves the attorney that did the consultation, but I guess I could have written something, but that's what I would have written.
Okay, all right. Because I kept looking in J, where is it?
There is no J.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Waugh?
Okay, so, I'm not sure I followed your whole thread here, so let me just try and see if I did. Okay, so, everything that is under K, you're saying is actually a bylaw, not a policy any longer, except that the consultant is saying we should put everything under bylaws?
No, everything that has under the 2000 number, not just, yeah, everything's under K, but there's a bunch more, they're all bylaws. And the consultant said that legally, there's no difference between a bylaw and a policy, that they are actually all Board policies.
So, the consultant is really saying then, we should follow the process and not distinguish, but you're saying these, you think, are, everything that's under K then should be, we should follow a separate process, and we're following on policies? Is that what you're saying?
Not just everything under K, but everything, yes, everything under K and everything's under 2000. We have been following the process. This does not go through the shared governance process, because it has to do with the way the Board conducts its business. It has never gone through shared governance, and the reason why is because the 2000 sequence doesn't go to shared governance. It does not involve anything but, you know, how the Board conducts its business. That's why I think it would make it clear if we were to call these something else. That's why, you know, like Board bylaw.
Okay, so, one last question. So, as I read through these BBs, I guess, it does seem to me that there are a number of statements that are made which might affect, it's not only the decorum of the Board, it's not only our behavior, but it is also our interaction and our relationship with the rest of the college. So, it does seem to me like, you know, maybe we should ask for some input and not just determine this on our own. So, that would be my comment.
Actually, it has to do with how we conduct our meetings.
Well, some of it is not, it is how we conduct our meeting, but it is also in relationship to how we interact with the college constituents. So, frankly, I do think that there are more policies.
Any other comments to Dr. Mann?
You said that the term limits and things like that were also in the 2000 series?
That the what?
You said the term limits, how long you serve, and when elections happen?
Yes, those are, those are in the Board bylaws, and they're just straight out of the law. You know, that when you have the election, that you serve for four years, the districts that you represent, that each year, each four years, you have to go through and decide if you're going to pay for the ballot statement, or if the candidate's going to follow it. It's an awful lot, how you put the agenda together, what the officers are, the duties of the officers. This is what's in the 2000 sequence.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with what Dr. Mann's saying about the internal workings, but some of those things about elections and, like Trustee Waugh was saying about interactions, I think it would be, how long do you think it would take to make a differentiation between which one should be policies and which one should be bylaws, because we can't just blanket all of them as bylaws?
Well, the 2000 sequence, these are all existing bylaws that we are looking at.
Right, I mean your switch, like making them BB so that we don't--
Well, we just change all the 2000s to BBs.
And then when will we go back to look at which one should be BPs and put them in a different series, as you said?
Well, and if someone sees one they think should go on a different series, we could certainly bring it back. Right now, we have a goal of reviewing all the policies in order to meet our own timeline, which we set for the accreditation standards. So, that means we have to, if we meet every business meeting as is scheduled, we have to review and approve six bylaws between now and the first of March. So, what I would like to do is go through and approve them, and then at that point, the committee, which is me and Dr. Fellow and Ms. Brown, could go and look and see which ones might be moved, and we could have a discussion on that.
Okay.
And again, most of these bylaws are required by the state and by all community colleges, legally. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Dr. Mann, move on to--
Well, but I want to, so, there's kind of a consensus on this, because I don't want to have to bring this up again. Could the minutes show that the Board agreed with this, or should we vote?
I'll entertain a motion that the 2000 series be renumbered or lettered BB, referencing bylaws.
I would like to offer an amendment. I would recommend that they be renumbered as Board bylaws, with the condition that the committee go back and review and separate those items that should be under policy.
Could that be a friendly amendment?
I'll accept that.
Yeah, that's friendly.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously with student trustee voting in the affirmative. Dr. Mann?
Okay, so, the first policy is--
And may I just interrupt very quickly? In your red folders, there's two revised, or actually, three revised documents that Dr. Mann's about to speak to.
Yeah. So, the first one is Board Policy, which will now be BB, and Ms. Colas gets the fun task of going back and relettering all these, which is public participation at Board meetings. This is, all the language is in red, it is all legally required. So, if anyone has any questions, we can, oh, I'm sorry. There are two paragraphs that are not legally required, but they are recommended. The others two are all legally required.
Dr. Fellow?
Ms. Waugh? So, on 2345, under the items that are recommended but not legally required, so what we're asking for, a written summary to be placed on the agenda at least two weeks prior to the Board meeting. You know, it seems to me that there, and I can think of some instances where things have come up, probably close to the Board meeting, but certainly within the 72 hours or even within a week of us being able to consider it. So, it seems to me two weeks could be difficult for us to then delay adding something to the agenda that could be important.
You could also submit it within two working days, in the next paragraph for the written Members of the public may also submit written communications to the Board on items on the agenda, to speak to agenda items at the Board meeting.
So, when do you distinguish whether or not you're going to say that this one doesn't get on because it wasn't submitted in two weeks versus something that's two days?
I'm sorry, that's if you want to speak. This is a request to put something on the agenda two weeks in advance.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time distinguishing that.
Okay. Well, you know, it usually takes a week or two to do the agenda. I mean, I don't think that is an unreasonable amount of time. This is just a request something to be placed on the agenda. If you wish to address the Board, you can submit written communications to working days, or you can come to the meeting and speak.
So, I guess my question is, I mean, why two weeks? I mean, is it onerous if something is important for us to say, I mean, it has to be 72 hours, so let's say it's a week. Why is two weeks the sort of the magic number here?
Mr. Martin would like to come in.
Well, I was Board President a year ago, and there are certain times where maybe, because I know they start preparing the packets at least a week in advance, just trying to get everything, but as Board President, you're constantly trying to take items from the colored checklist and queue them up, and plan a meeting that doesn't go too long or too late, but gives everything the right amount of time. That's no small task. There are times where things nicely fall into place and the meetings get over timely, and there are times where we're here till 11 o'clock and we're not getting all the stuff done. I think you got to give the Board President and the Superintendent President a couple weeks to fit pieces in based on all the needs of the district. And so, knowing that one week is just process time, once you've kind of made the decision as to what's queuing up, I think that only gives them a week. So, it seems very appropriate to me.
That's a better answer than mine.
Okay, any other comments? Dr. Mann, you want to?
Okay, the next one is BP 2350, and this is the item on speakers. And again, everything here in black is our existing policy. So, there's really only a few changes to the existing policy as the way that we conduct our meetings. I think the only significant, well, actually, the only significant change that I can see is that it clarifies that speakers are limited to one presentation, one specific item, and that no member may speak without being recognized by the Chair, which is really kind of the basics of parliamentary procedure, and it is, you know, recommended, I think, for that reason. Otherwise, this is existing policy. Yes, Ms. Waugh?
Okay, so, on item number 13, where it says, "Non-scheduled substitutes may not speak in place of scheduled speakers unless alternates have been submitted." So, where we've had instances where faculty have either been in classrooms and then have asked for someone to present their information, does this preclude them from doing that?
Not if they put it on their original request, but they fill out the card, they can put it down.
Okay, so, they can say that they're speaking on behalf of someone.
Right, yes, that's my understanding.
All right, I just want to clarify that.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay. Next one is 2355, which is Board Decorum, and that one is in our packet. I have to find it. On this one, this is pretty much all recommended as good practice. It has to do with what is appropriate and what is not appropriate at the Board meetings, and what happens if, in order to be able to conduct an orderly, orderly meeting. Any questions or comments on this one? The next one is 2410. At 2410 and 2431, I mean, 2410, Board Policies and Administrative Procedures, we've already looked at and approved, but we had had them separated, and we just combined the policy and the administrative procedure. The next one is 2431, which is the policy on the President-Supreme-Tentate selection, and this is pretty much the existing policy. Let's see, 2431, okay, here it is. In fact, actually, I think it's exactly the existing policy. So, if anyone has any changes, you would like to make them the existing policy, this would be the time to bring them up.
Ms. Waugh?
So, on item number 10, where it says that the Board of Trustees or designee will conduct a background check. So, in reading the ACCJC information, one of the things they caution is that the Board of Trustees not engage in actually doing the reference check and that we then designate someone. So, I know this doesn't preclude us from doing that, but I'm wondering if we should be more clear on that.
Well, actually, this Board has always conducted, except in, I hate to say, the last selection, onsite visits. And I think that is a good thing for the Board to have onsite visits. You don't necessarily have to accept everything the ACCJC says. And I think if we'd had an onsite visit in some other instances, we might have had made different decisions, might have been made. I say that again with the caveat that I was ill and was not involved in the process at all on selection of the most recent president. But I have never been on one of the onsite visits, but I know, Mr. Martin, you have. Did you find it helpful?
Well, was your question about the onsite visit, or was your question about the background check? Yeah, it's really, she was mostly asking about--
But the background, it says including onsite visits.
No, I know, I don't think she's questioning that part of it. I think she's questioning, and the way it's worded, it says the Board of Trustees and/or designee, and I guess the point Trustee Waugh's making is that they recommend the Board has a designee that does the background check?
Right, right, as opposed to the Board actually doing--
Doing that, though the Board themselves may--
We should not be doing the reference check.
Right, and so, you know, obviously, we can be more specific on that, or the way it's written with the and/or clause gives the Board the discretion to designate somebody because we know better from the league. So, however you want to slice that, either way, I'm fine.
Because we all seem to be under the sort of AC, of the accreditation visit coming up, I guess, you know, I guess, it would, to me, it seems like we should be more clear. If we do, if we agree with the ACCJC recommendations, the Board should not be involved in that, then we should say that, that we appointed a designee. But if we say, "Okay, this doesn't make any difference to us, we should go ahead and participate," then I guess we would leave it. So, I'm thinking of it just in terms of the accreditation issues.
I don't think accreditation addresses who does background checks.
Well, the ACCJC report does say they recommend that the trustees not engage in the reference checking.
So, some clever English, "Where's our man? He just left." There's probably a way to rewrite this. Is he still here? Amy and our new hire--
Welcome to the club.
There's probably a way to rewrite this where we're not designating this at all. I mean, there's probably a way to say the Board of Trustees will make sure a background check is--
I honestly think this reads fine.
I don't see a thing, I don't see a thing wrong with it. I think it just, it gives us the flexibility to do whatever we want. Any other questions on this? And a couple of things I would like to, I would like to point out, at the risk of maybe, you know, I think it's really important that people understand if we're going to go with these procedures, that number nine says, "The Board of Trustees may choose to interview any candidate in the applicant pool." And that's there, it's right there. Another thing that I think is really important for people to understand is, the committee that is appointed is a screening committee. It says, "The Board of Trustees will use a screening committee to assist in evaluating the pool of candidates." And then the Board of Trustees will determine the number and composition of the committee, the process to be used, and how many candidates they will forward to the Board. But this is not a selection committee. It is a committee that screens candidates. It does not choose the Superintendent President. And I think that it's, I've been on two or three searches, and I think there's always confusion about this. This is a screening committee, they review and screen the applications down to a certain number that they then recommend to the Board.
I have a question?
Yes, Mr. Lewis. Dr. Savage?
Yes, the, okay, this is a screening committee, and we, the screening, excuse me, process, the Board has a prerogative to hire somebody who hasn't been recommended by the screening committee, correct?
It says, yeah, they can interview people that haven't been recommended.
Yeah.
Ms. Waugh?
So, now that Dr. Mann has brought that up, I guess, yeah, that does cause me to pause a bit, because I know that there was some criticism of past boards in doing, taking that action. And I guess, if that process is not clear, I mean, the statement's certainly clear, but if the process of, you know, how, when do you choose that you don't like the applicant pool that's submitted, or, you know, under what circumstances would you then go into the pool and pick someone that was not one of the top, I don't know, three or five, yeah, who are recommended? I think that causes people to be unclear and maybe even distrust the process. I think we should be more clear about that.
Well, let me clarify, the searches I've been on, the Board never hired anyone that wasn't recommended. The Board just asked the committee to recommend additional candidates, which does not mean that they went into the applicant pool and picked someone out. No matter what you've heard, that is what actually occurred. So, I mean, maybe that's too strong, that they may choose to interview any candidate in the applicant pool, maybe it should be, the Board may request additional candidates?
Yes, yes, yes.
Probably much better.
Because that's, I mean, that's what we've done. Is that your recollection, John?
Well, my recollection is that one time, there was, and I'm trying to remember, I think there was a huge applicant-- think there was a huge applicant pool, and then it was filtered down to so many, and then there were a certain number of names that were, and then there was another screening that brought it down to a certain number of names that we interviewed. On one, on one time, we were criticized for going back into the next pool down, and on the next search, we were criticized for not going back into the next pool down.
Next pool down, mhm.
Which gave me confidence that no matter what we do, we will be criticized.
Right.
I'm confident of that. But I think what we did, I don't think we ever went back to the base. I mean, I think the initial base was hundreds of names, and there's a committee that screened it to...
Eight, six.
I don't know, somebody may remember. And then there was another second level committee that screened it to five or six that we interviewed. So I think this just gives you flexibility, is the way I view it.
I think the wording on nine should need to be changed because what it, the impression that it gives me is the fact that we could just call out Jane Doe out of one, you know, disregard what was recommended, and pick, handpick someone out.
That's exactly what it says.
So I think, exactly, so I think if we want to change it, we should change number nine and do what she said, go back to the other pool, select additional, select additional candidates to be interviewed, but not just to pick one out. That's what I'm looking at.
So what about the Board of Trustees may request additional candidates?
Yeah, I think that's...
No recommendations, yeah.
Yeah.
The Board of Trustees, was that what you were going to say, Mr. Lewis?
Right, just the Board of Trustees may request additional recommendations.
From the selection committee? From the screening committee?
Yes.
Right.
Are you getting that, Ms. Colerose? Okay, I, I think it's really important that we clarify this so that everyone knows before we even start, you know, what we're going to do at the, at the very, at the very end. You feel, do you feel comfortable with that, John?
Well, no, I don't. But I'm still processing all this.
So perhaps this, perhaps this bylaw should be pulled to have the subcommittee review.
I would feel more comfortable pulling this and giving a little chance to rethink about this one.
Okay, okay, we'll, we will pull 2431. And, and if people think of anything, please let a member of the committee know, and again, the committee is trustee fellow trustee Brown and me. Yes, Mr. Martin?
Dr. Mann, on item number three, the original one in the binder had college president crossed out, and this one doesn't. So it says college president, superintendent president, is that intentional?
It's, it's, it's just to correct the title, yes. What was your question?
So the correct title is college president, superintendent president?
No, the, the correct title is superintendent president, that's why college president is crossed.
Your revised one doesn't have it crossed.
Well, then that's, that's a mistake. Okay, we'll correct that.
Yeah, on number three, yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll correct it. I'm sorry, didn't see number three.
Oh, no, I just want to let you know so when you...
No, thank you, thank you, we will, we will correct. And actually, when we finish with these, Ms. Colerose goes through them very, very carefully and makes sure that there's, to catch things like, like that. And one time, there were two phrases repeated and, and, and that kind of thing. Okay, so you want to pull 2431?
Right.
Okay. And so then I would move that we approve, oh, let me get the list of numbers here.
Hold on a second.
Okay, thank you.
So we're approving 2345, 2350, 2355, and 2410.
Okay, those, those four, yes.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. It is now time for the superintendent president's report.
Thank you. I'll start by wishing our student trustee, Marshall Lewis, a happy birthday.
Thank you. There's a cake here, which can be divided up among every, no, it can't, don't listen to him. There's no vote on this.
I guess, happy birthday, Marshall.
Thank you.
And then I also wanted to say, I've got a bit of a five o'clock shadow, and I apologize for that, but I had the distinct honor and pleasure to do kind of a marathon quick trip to Washington, D.C. to accept on behalf of the college and our, our faculty and, and staff, a finalist award from Excellency in Education for PCC's First Year Pathways Program. It was recognized as an exemplary program for helping our Latino students attain that important goal of transfer. It's a very impressive achievement. We were one of four finalists at the associate's level out of over 1,200 community colleges nationwide. So I give thanks to all of our faculty, all of our staff, all of our pathways people, Dr. Levo, Dr. Klein, all the leadership that brought this great distinction to us. There was a press release that was released this morning, and we're going to pump that good news out everywhere. So it was my pleasure to do that. And I was quite relieved, I didn't get any sleep, but I was quite relieved to get back here on time today to participate in the Flex Day activities. So let me just start briefly by saying that we had an incredibly successful Flex Day. I want to give sincere thanks to the Academic Senate, the Classified Senate, the Management Association, our Human Resources Department, and many, many individuals and others who put on today what I thought was one of our best Flex Days in, in many a year. And it started this morning, the Academic Senate hosted a, an in-depth review of the Modern Think Climate Survey. I'm sure that President Cairo will speak to that. And then the Academic Senate was gracious enough to invite myself, Dr. Bell, Dr. Scott, Dr. Corner, and Dr. Levo to basically answer questions. And I had an opportunity to, to give a short, Eduardo, I hope it was short, a four to six minute, I think it was four to six minutes in terms of opening remarks, and then we took questions for at least 45 minutes longer, I think. And I thought it was very productive, and I do sincerely appreciate the opportunity. And then I also want to just throw my own comment in about the new faculty introduction. I, I'm never, never, well, I'm always amazed and impressed with the quality of faculty that this institution draws, their educational background, the institutions that they went to, and PCC does draw excellent candidates. And my sincere appreciation to the committees for the selection of this fine group of new, of new faculty. So thank you, Dr. Bell, and all the deans out there, who I know this is probably your most important function, is hiring our faculty and nurturing and helping them to develop. That ends, and then, other than the written reports that are in your binders, that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to announcements. Mr. Rosko, Associated Students.
Dang it, Miller, you took my thunder. I was going to wish Marshall a happy birthday. Oh, I made him a cake.
You can do it again.
Yeah, oh, okay. Happy birthday, Marshall. Happy 21st birthday. So, just kidding, he's 31. So Associated Students is doing really well. We are going to the California Community College Student Affairs Association Conference, which is going to be happening on October 17th. We will be actually hosting a workshop there, Leadership Through Dr. Seuss. So I will be teaching that along with three other of my board members, because we just feel like it's about time PCC steps it up at these student conferences. We will also be attending the CCLC conference in November, so we will hopefully see some of you there. The entire board is going there. Last year, I went in the spring to their legislative conference and got a lot of good stories, good information, good data in regards to student success, so we're going to use that this year. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Classified Senate, Ms. Grazziella Carangella. Mi piaci su nome.
You're pronouncing that correctly. Good evening, trustees. On behalf of the Classified Senate Board, I'm happy to inform you that we had a very successful Classified Professional Learning Day, and echoing the words of Dr. Bob Miller, also known as Flex Day today. The Classified Senate collaborated with and received tremendous support from the Academy of Professional Learning. They really did come through for us and help us to provide the various informative workshops that were offered today to our classified staff. We had a very successful outcome with 180 classified staff in attendance. Lastly, the Classified Senate will hold our Fall General Meeting on Thursday, October 30th, to which we warmly extend an invitation to all of you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Cairo, Academic Senate?
I couldn't help but notice how, when the new faculty were introduced, how happy you looked, and some of you very giddy. So I'm going to make a suggestion that I think is going to make you simply delirious. Imagine this, next year this time, 52 full-time, brand-new faculty. Hopefully, you'll approve the administration, and you will approve us having the much-needed faculty that we have. In regards to the Flex Day, Dr. Miller was absolutely correct. It was, it went pretty, it went very well for us. And, Dr. Miller, thank you for showing up because there were some very tough questions that were posed to Dr. Miller, and faculty that spoke to me afterwards were impressed with the responses. One of the questions dealt with trust, and faculty believed in his answers, believed that what Dr. Miller was heartfelt, and they believed that change is quite possible. And so, thank you very much for, for being here. Leading into the Modern Think, I don't know if, I don't know if you, all of you have or have not seen the, the survey, but one thing that, that caught my attention right now in one of the previous discussions, trustee Martin, I think you're absolutely right. Whether you go forward or backward in regards to this policy of the superintendent president's election, you're going to get criticized. I agree. And I, I also believe that regardless of what you do right now with this, with this policy, you are going to get criticized. But if, if what you're interested in is being, is not being criticized, I think that one of the ways to avoid that is by, given the fact that you have representatives from the Academic Senate, Classified Senate, Management Association, perhaps before you make a decision on this particular policy, that you take input from the members that would be serving on this committee to help and make a better decision. I think that if all of us are part of that decision, that criticism won't be, that's, I think that's a very good way of avoiding it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Douglas, Management Association?
Thank you, President Phelan. Since it's not nine o'clock yet, I might speak another minute longer than I usually do. But I just want to say, it was more of a workday than a flex day for the managers today, but we had several dozen managers go through three-hour EEO training, and so we're all ready to hire that next round of 52 faculty that Eduardo suggests. I also wanted to just tell you a couple of things that are going on in the School of Science and Math. Last Saturday, we had a joint summit with Cal Poly Pomona and PCC. We had about 20 faculty from each of the schools. It was an intercollegiate summit on redesigning the STEM curriculum, and the theme was transitions because the Cal States are transitioning to semesters, and we're transitioning to schools. And it was a great matchup, a chance to work both interdisciplinary, horizontally, and vertically, intercollegially. The other good news, Dr. Mann will be glad to hear this, Cal State Northridge just received a National Institutes of Health Build Grant to the tune of $21.8 million, and we are a partner to that. So we'll be sharing, and some of that would be an opportunity for our students. I myself am going to be at, this is for Tony, Cal State Fullerton on Saturday with the Southern California Undergraduate Research Board. I've recently been appointed to that. And I also wanted to say that at Cal State Northridge next week, they're having a White House College, College Opportunity Panel, and we are going to be represented there. We're running a workshop on redesigning introductory STEM courses and sitting in on a panel discussion. So a lot going on.
Speaking of Cal State Fullerton, it's now the largest university in the state of California.
Yeah, yeah, congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Nothing, sir.
Dr. Savage?
Nothing.
Two things, I want to remind everybody once again that on November the 11th, beginning at 10:30 in the morning in front of Pasadena City Hall, we'll be having our Veterans Memorial Celebration. Pasadena PCC, rather pep band, is to perform once again, and so encourage everybody to come out and pay tribute to, to our veterans who serve us so well. The other one to mention, I had passed out to many of our folks up here, I think all of the people at the table here, and hopefully some others as well, that this Sunday at Farnsworth Park in Altadena, from 4:00 to about 9:00 in the evening, there's going to be an event called Rock for PEF, which is going to be a music festival, not my style of music, but nonetheless, a major event there that is for the promotion and support of music education programs in passing local public schools, work done through the Pasadena Educational Foundation, of which I happen to serve on the board and as the president of the board at the present time. But two weeks ago, in Memorial Park, we had Battle of the Bands. They had 12 high school-type bands, and some much, much younger. There was one band that had three members, the ages were 10, 7, and 8. And, you know, again, not my style of music, but they were very, very phenomenal. We had between 500 and 600 people out there watching us and attending, and so it was very, very successful. So you can go online at the Pasadena Educational Foundation website and buy your tickets for this event, Rock for PEF. But go there and support the Pasadena Public Schools music program through the Pasadena Educational Foundation. So I hope to see you all there.
Do you know, I was wondering, Silver Sun Pickups?
It's a band name.
It's a band.
Yes, right.
As I tell my students, you'll all be listening to Frank Sinatra someday.
Yeah, I have a couple of announcements. So on, let's see, September the 19th, I attended Pasadena Academic and Career Trust Dual Enrollment between PCC and PUSD. I guess this was, yeah, this was facilitated actually by your own Cynthia Olivo and PUSD, and it was extremely informative. The goal was to set the agenda for them, for us to work together to implement this dual enrollment. On September the 21st, I did go and see that play Kiss Me Kate, which was an outstanding performance, and I was very enlightened with Dr. Jimenez's presentation of how he just, the historic perspective of the play. So it is something that, if you have some time, you should go and see and get some more culture. On September 27, I attended Young African-American Conference, which was hosted here at PCC, which was also very good. We had over, I think, maybe close to 200 students. And it was three?
Almost 300.
Okay, good, almost three. So it was something that we're looking forward to continue to help our African-American young men achieve. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Watt?
Yes, I, I understand I was remiss in not letting the board know that Scott Lay, who is the CEO of the League, took a leave of absence, but he should be back shortly. So this news is coming a little late, but Dr. Thelma Scott-Skillman is the interim CEO, so if anyone was working with the League, that is who is the point person now. Also, I wanted to let people know that at the November conference, the League conference, ACCJC has revamped some of their training, and so I encourage everyone to go to that workshop. So I think it was in response to a number of questions that the, the League asked regarding how do trustees get better trained, or what should, how should we, can be, how can we be more effective in the accreditation process? So I encourage everyone to go. And then October 30th, Laxta will be holding their meeting in conjunction with the LA County Superintendent, Dr. Delgado, and it will be the election of the county committee, who is the, the group that, I guess, decides on whether or not there's issues that are regarding reorganization, redistricting come before them when they cannot be resolved at the local level. And in addition, Dr. Delgado has arranged to have the family of, have Rachel's story told, and Rachel was the first student who was killed in Columbine. So I understand it's a very moving story, and so I encourage everyone to come. So that'll be October 30th at the County Superintendent of Schools office.
Ms. Brown, you had one more?
Oh, yeah, I forgot. We, there's one more announcement, I think tomorrow night, Dr. Bell will be recognized, is that correct, at the NWACP special? So we hope to, we will all rally down there to support him.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Mann?
I have nothing to report, except as a follow-up to Professor Cairo's statement. If anyone would like to send any suggestions about the selection process, we will, we'll be... If anyone would like to send any suggestions about the selection process, we will be coming up next time, but I'd be glad to receive it, just email it to me. I did check with my appointee and ask for, you know, suggestions how this could be approved. I don't remember who was on the committee, but if any faculty or anyone would like to make suggestions, I certainly will take it into consideration. That's why we do this publicly.
Amen, thank you. I was going to say, leave us with some good news, but you have nothing to report.
That's my good news.
You have in front of you the future business meetings, and is there any future agenda items? This meeting's adjourned.
Are we meeting on the 15?